Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, January 18, 2023. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, as citizen input for items that are not on the agenda, and it looks like Mr. Keith Harless has joined us in person. So yeah, three-minute testimony at the microphone in front of us. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. My name is Dr. Keith Harless. I'm a retired pulmonary disease specialist, having practiced here and been for 35 years. I'm also a resident whose home is within one-mile radius of a proposed site up for the 100-year landfill replacement of Knott. I wanted to speak to you today in follow-up of my email letter on January 14, and I again appreciate the time. Excuse me. If you believe my comments are premature, I don't. Currently, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, under your direction, is evaluating 12 proposed sites for the replacement. Notably, two of these sites, the Rickard Road and Bear Creek Road, are directly adjacent to 20-year-plus-old residential communities. Both are high on the list, notably one or two. I find this unconscionable. There is a growing amount of medical literature documenting the adverse health effects of persons living within one to three miles of landfill. These health risks include various forms of cancer, most notably lung cancer. Respiratory diseases, particularly in children, are recognized, along with other health hazards. The documentation of these risks and concerns are published in refereed, reputable, established medical journals. In addition, there are substantial concerns about air, water, light, and noise pollution. Notably, the aquifer from both these sites flow north. Any contamination would jeopardize the domestic water of Bend, Redmond, Culver, and Madras. When the Knott landfill was planned in 1972, there wasn't too much out there. Parenthetically, and as you might recall, when the St. Charles Medical Hospital, under the guidance of Sister Catherine, was built out where it is now in 1975, people were saying, "Why? That's so far out." I'm sorry, Rickard Road and Bear Creek Road are not that far out. We all recognize that Bend and Deschutes County is growing, and necessarily will largely grow east. Accompanying this presentation, printout is a map of the Rickard Road site and the multiple adjacent homes. As I remind, 100-plus homes within one-mile radius. Additionally, you are very well aware, as I said, Bend and Deschutes is growing. There will be more homes and more residents at risk if landfills are in the Bear Creek or Rickard area. I assume that the SWAC has not communicated to you because their work is not yet done. How much of the information I've just shared with you, you know, I have no idea. That said, it is true that the proposed Rickard Road and Bear Creek Road sites are residential and have many homes within a one-mile radius. It is true that both areas will grow. It is true there are real health hazards and environmental concerns surrounding landfills. It is true that the SWAC will be spending a lot of money, resources, and time to further evaluate the proposed sites. To consider placing a 100-year landfill replacement adjacent to recognize growing residential community-
I see you're flipping the next page, so it's a three-minute testimony, and we'll just-
I'm within 15 seconds.
Okay.
Adjacent to recognize growing residential communities should be a non-starter. You could save a significant amount of taxpayers' money and SWAC's time to direct them now to take out of consideration those residential community proposed sites. And I appreciate your time very much.
But I want to thank you very much for the testimony. So I would like to respond a little bit today, and hopefully other people will follow this. This is, this is big. It's, you know, we need one site in Deschutes County somewhere. A couple of years ago, we really tried to do an outreach and did a lot of work and community effort in what's a good choice? What's a good path to go? Because we could either, you know, fill trucks up all day and send them 150 miles away, or look for a site that's within, you know, 5, 10, 20, 30 miles in the county. If we own a site, it's very cost-effective long-term for everybody in the county. These are 12 sites, and we, and I've been saying it for years now, the day we lay a map on the table is the day it gets really exciting. And that just happened. And I want to thank you for getting engaged. We only need one of these sites, you know, and so this has really, you know, gotten people engaged at this point in time. The big picture is, if we can cite one somewhere in Deschutes County, it's going to be cost-effective and even environmentally, you know, valuable for generations to come. So, big picture is, we're trying to find one right spot. I understand you're, you know, opposing two specific sites at this time. So, it's a 12 proposed sites, going to get down to three to five in the next step. So, and it's going to be another year before we even really make these big decisions. So, and I'm involved. I went to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meetings the last few times they've met, knowing that this map was going to be put out at this point in time. So, thanks for being engaged.
Well, thank you for your time, and I'll leave these documents here.
Great.
Thank you.
Hand them to her.
If I could also just ask, Dr. Harless, if I could also just ask, it would be really helpful, like, I'd be interested in seeing some of those studies you mentioned about the relationships between landfills and respiratory illness in the nearby vicinity. And I would also be very particularly interested to see kind of the age of the landfill sites that are studied, you know, in those, in that research, because, you know, a landfill that was built 50 years ago is a really different, technologically, it's a really different animal than, you know, a modern solid waste management facility, so.
You can get back on the microphone if you'd like to communicate.
Mr. Chang, I'd be happy to send that along to you. As you might well recognize, such medical research is very difficult. The sites that I have referred to, and you will see, are considered non-hazardous waste. So, we're not talking about the stuff that can really, we all recognize, give trouble. I was impressed yesterday, when I was at the SWAC meeting, when I referred to other health hazards. I was somewhat surprised how many people said, "I'm nauseous. I have headaches. I haven't eaten for a month because I'm so worried about where this landfill is going to be next to my house." So, there's a lot of different health hazards, and I recognize those are rather minor, but they're real to the people who have them. And these health hazards that are published are real.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome seeing the information.
Is there anybody else to testify in the room? Is there anyone online? Okay, so we do have other emails on different topics. For the record, citizen input for opposition to a Thornburg resort, citizen input supporting wildlife inventory update. So, last week, we had 90, and these are eight more additional testimony. And then, in favor of Tumala representation and the Planning Commission, which is a topic we've talked about recently also. I want to thank everybody for these, this testimony to our board.
So, what about all the letters we're getting regarding the siding? Where are those going to? Because I'm getting one, one every few minutes.
So, the landfill-
Are those going to us personally?
So, what I've seen is that it has our three names on it, and, you know, the email future-
It has to go to citizen input, then, for it to get in the record here? Okay.
And Commissioners, they're coming in very, to citizen input, to the board, as well as to the Solid Waste Department. They're collecting all, maintaining a collection of all the public records, and they will schedule an update to the Board of Commissioners in the next couple of weeks, and they'll provide you with the full packet of all public comments at that time, and to discuss the status of the project, elaborating on what Chair DeBoe was just mentioning about kind of where we're at with 12, seven, three to five, and what that process looks like in more detail. So, the public comments are extremely important to all of us, and are certainly very meaningful and being read and considered carefully. Thank you.
Well, I know it was interesting, if anyone does live on Rickard Road, that the fact that we finished paving it out to Highway 20 going east, I was like going, "Well, interesting." If you live there. So, I appreciate hearing from everyone. And thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consent.
So moved, but I want to acknowledge and thank Jim Morrell for serving on the Fair Board, and then Carrie Novak is, was reappointed, and new member will be Wendy Avery, so.
Second. And also, yeah, so we have some appointments for the road districts, but also, yeah, special thanks to Carrie Novak for stepping up again, and then also congratulation to Wendy Avery for joining the Fair Board. And once again, thank you very much for Jim Morrell. So, he's been a long time serving Fair Board members. Remember, there's a cycle here where the fair facility was a $20 million bond voted on by the people. So, I think he's been there that whole time, since the new facility has been built. So, thank you very much for that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes. At this time, item number seven, 2023 Legislative Session Update. Doug, thank you very much for joining us. This is where we practice talking about this whirlwind thing called a legislative session.
So-
Here we go.
I come to you from a white spot in the hallway in the Senate wing.
Great.
There is, as I mentioned to you all last time, when I talked to you, the Capitol is under construction. So, about two-thirds of the state Capitol is shut down. So, the entire basement is shut down, the entire front of the Capitol, the rotunda, the Galleria that steps up in the lobbies, the lobbies outside the chambers, all shut down. So, no cafeteria, no coffee, kind of hard to operate in this kind of a session with no caffeine, but we'll figure out a way to deal with it. And, and no meeting spaces. So, when you come over to the Capitol, you'll see a lot of people sitting on floors and in corners, and in my case, in a chair outside of Senator Tim Canop's office. So, I'm happy to be here, and I'll just give you a quick introduction on what's going on. The legislature came in on Tuesday, yesterday, and launched rapidly. At 8:30 in the morning, they started hearings. I was in the building last night until 6:45. They concluded a hearing on transportation issues, ODOT, and tolling about that time, and then I had to go speak at another event, and it was back here this morning at 7:30. So, it will, it'll continue to be like that, fast and furious. There are 2,000-plus bills that have been introduced so far this session. We actually expect a record number of bills to be introduced. According to insider sources, there might be close to 4,000 bills in the drafting process already. That's a lot of bills. For 90 members and 23 committees to produce 4,000 bills, that's a lot to go through. So, with, with the construction activities in the Capitol, one of the things that they're running into is lack of hearing rooms, because there are four fewer hearing rooms than there have traditionally been. And so, they've reduced committee meeting times from two hours to 90 minutes, and they're asking people to be brief in testimony, and asking members to be brief in asking questions as well. So, we've begun the process of going through the list of bills. I've sent to staff for evaluation about 10 pages worth of bills, which you'll see shortly. But they range the gamut, everything from housing and homelessness, land use statutes that would impact the county. There are, by my count, 11 bills dealing with wildfire mapping, and of course, the ADU issue falls within that wildfire mapping issue. I was just in the Senate Committee in Natural Resources. Senator Gold in the committee mentioned that it has been quite a bit of the time working on revising Senate Bill 762, addressing the wildfire issues and the wildfire mapping issues. So, stay tuned, there will be a lot, lot of action on that. There'll also be quite a bit of work in the session on behavioral health and mental health, behavioral health workforce. So, the things that impact the county from a public health standpoint will be front and center. Deschutes County isn't the only county that's having a challenge finding mental health professionals, behavioral health professionals, to work in the systems that we have in our county. That's a statewide issue, and something that I think the legislature is very committed to focusing on in the next six months. I think that's the, those are the main issues I wanted to highlight. Certainly, we're trying to get out and, and early on in the session, meet with our legislative delegation, not just from Deschutes County, but from the other counties surrounding the area. I want to thank all three of you for attending the Central Oregon Summit that was held in December. We had great participation from Brick County and Jefferson County, even Wasco County. So, it's, it's exciting to see the region collaborate together, work on these issues. We're also spending time working with the AOC. I've already met most of the staff on the AOC, and we're developing relationships with them so we can keep in touch with what's going on. Last thing I'll say is that the session, in spite of the fact that this is a long session, long means 160 days, so we'll be over in mid-June, but things do move quickly. And the initial bill deadlines for bills to get out of the Senate Committee or the House Committee, and either the floor on the Ways and Means, is in late March, early April this year. So, it's a quick turnaround time for policy issues that we want to move, budget items, you know, items like the courthouse funding, et cetera. So, I think I'll end there, take any questions you might have. But this is the beginning of a road that people say is often fast and always furious.
Great, thank you very much. So, let's start at the top, kind of the whole big picture here. So, this is Doug Riggs, Northwest Policy Associates, lobbying efforts contracted to Deschutes County. Whitney Hale is here, because she kind of is the deputy county administrator, leading the show on corralling legislative topics, I guess. Anything to start with, Whitney?
No. Commissioner DeBoe, I'm going to thank you, Doug, for that introduction. Jen Patterson is assisting this year Strategic Initiatives Manager with our legislative process, and as Doug mentioned, we've received a number of bills that Northwest Policy Advocates has flagged for us. And Jen has done a great job of reviewing those and getting them out to the appropriate staff to provide their recommendation to the board on priority and position. So, that's in progress. We're anticipating that when we convene next Friday for the board's first formal legislative update, that you'll have your first bill report to review and really walk through with departments to get their thoughts and feedback on the initial bills that we've seen come through so far from Northwest Policy Advocates. So, just to kind of tie Doug's introduction to our typical process, that's where we are internally in, in our process.
And this is a regular board meeting on a Wednesday, but we are going to start scheduling legislative update, and during those meetings, we may take positions on some of those. They'll all be public meetings, also published, and they could roll into any of these board meetings whenever we meet, because it'll be fast and furious. So, if we're meeting on a Monday afternoon or a Wednesday, we can bring this topic up, pretty much, or any topic up at any time, as things are happening in the legislature.
So, what time do we determine that meeting?
We are at 8:00 AM on Fridays. We've scheduled that as a weekly recurrence, with obviously the option for the board to modify that as you wish, either with frequency or with time as we get going. But I think we've found that out of the gate, sometimes there's a lot to digest, so we went ahead and scheduled those for weekly to start.
And then, at that point, we may have department heads, you know, wanting to explain what's going on, what bill, how it matters, how we like it or don't like it. So, then we'll really start to do a roundtable for our department heads and staff also.
Correct.
Any thoughts or questions?
No.
So, one of the topics we did confirm that we're going to do and ask for courthouse expansions, there's a letter that has been proposed here. So, Doug, I think you may be up to speed on this. You know, we're committed. We're going to build a three-story courthouse. We're going to add four courtrooms, a lot of great capacity and improvements in our court facility. And with inflation and cost escalations, we're, we're coming back hat in hand, saying, "Okay, well, if there's capital dollars, you know, please provide some for us." So, you know, we can, you know, shave down the debt load that we might need to take on for the next 20 years or so, because it will be some kind of a debt load, possibly in the end anyway. So, we do have a proposed letter here that will provide-
How did we get 69,000 square feet on that letter?
How did we get 69-
Yeah, if it's three levels.
What?
I think it's 13,000 times three.
Three, yeah, is not 69.
We can double-check that was-
She's good with the numbers.
I'm like going, "Oh, let's see, let's do my math." That's like 23,000 floors, so there's only three floors. And then, the other thing, I know you guys will be, Senator Canop's office is actually thinking, and Doug, you can have feedback on this, that we should really ask for 25 million. They think that, they're getting great response from people in the building for asking for 25, and then they said, "Patty, that way you may get, you may get your 20."
Something that would be helpful to understand, what we request and how we make our request would be to, Doug, if you could walk us through how a request like this is processed at the legislature, and kind of where the, where the money comes out the other end. I mean, you know, is this, is this individual legislators putting a little bit in a Christmas tree bill? Is this something that comes through the, you know, Judiciary Committee? Is, you know, like, how, how does the, how do we input this into the legislative process? And what are the ways that it works, its way through?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Chang, thank you very much for that question. That's a, that's an excellent question. And typically, the way that local funding requests are handled is, is the request is made through the, the appropriate representative and senator from the district. In this case, it would be Senator Canop would be the Senate member, and Representatives Levy and Krupp would be the House members. So, the goal would be to get the three of them to adopt this as kind of one of their top priorities. And then, they would take it to the Ways and Means Committee. The Capitol construction budget is one of the last items that comes out of the building, so it will come out in June. If we're lucky, we might have some advance notice in late May that it would be on the, the list. And a lot of this depends on the revenue forecasts. So, we have a revenue forecast for the state coming up in February. We have our final revenue forecast in the session coming up in May. And let's cross our fingers and hope that the economy continues to grow, and that lottery revenue continues to flow in. So, the ability of the state to bond for these types of things continues to be strong. There has been very strong support for courthouse programs in the past few sessions. You know, I'll refer to the Clackamas County Courthouse as a great example. It took them a couple sessions, but they got a significant amount of money for their courthouse and other courthouses, like the Creek County Courthouse, et cetera. So-
What was the number that Clackamas got, Doug?
Commissioner, I'd have to go back and take a look, but it was more than $25 million. I'll just say that.
Okay, I just would like, you know, that, that helps our ask, because Deschutes County is always fairly financially conservative, and we try and pay our own bills. And should that, you know, should we be able to ask for 25 million and not feel guilty?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that asking for 25 million is a reasonable amount. You're asking for, for Capitol construction bonding dollars. These are dollars that, you know, really have a return on investment for the state. They generate construction, they generate jobs, they generate economic development, and they solve problems and lead to long-term economies for the operation of the judicial system. So, I think that's a reasonable amount to ask. Again, the key is, you know, getting the buy-in of Senator Canop and our two representatives. But that, those discussions are already taking place. I'd be fairly confident that we have a very good shot at getting some.
You mentioned those three legislators, and each of them also has committee assignments? Are, are any of their committee assignments more or less relevant to this request? Or is it, is it really just, they, they send stuff over to Ways and Means and Ways and Means processes?
I think, Commissioner, it's, it's a combination of the two. And certainly, having Representative Krupp being the chair of the Judiciary Committee probably helps, having Senator Beattie, the Republican leader. That's a, that's a leadership position, and he has been in the building off and on since 1999. So, I think those factors are part of what goes into the, the long-term decisions at the end of the session. But be that as it may, I think that it sounds like a letter is in process that will have some good details, and putting together a good fiscal case for the request, justifying it as far as it being a reasonable request that will solve problems, address issues in the community. All of those are important factors for Ways and Means consideration.
And when we were making the request for the judges, we coordinated with the, the department, OJD. Is, for a courthouse capital request, is it, is it similar, or is coordination with OJD more or less important? or less important?
Commissioner, I think that coordination with all the interested parties is important. I'd dot all the i's and cross the t's, check all the boxes, leave no stone unturned. I'd make sure we talked to as many people as possible. You never know when one additional little piece of information or support from a small group or a large group might be the tipping point and push capital construction members over the edge to fund it. So, you know, leave no stone unturned.
So a couple of thoughts for this letter. What about putting a paragraph in there about, you know, we are, you know, hosting the deputy district attorneys in this complex also, and by building this, it's going to open up a whole bunch of capacity for the deputy DA. So there may be a real good opportunity there, especially for Representative Crop to understand because he worked in that environment. So they're going to have a whole new floor to be able to expand into by building this out. So that would be just, you know, kind of internally for our wording, some words about, you know, hosting and, you know, empowering the deputy DAs to be their best, or, you know, some good words there. And then in the last paragraph, I'd be hesitant to say we are in need of additional support. You know, let's say something about we're, you know, we're asking again, or we're, you know, looking to partner or do something like that.
Okay.
It looks like they have the numbers. If 95% of the funding went on the other side of the mountains, probably those numbers are somewhere in that, how much Clackamas got.
Yeah, I actually, and I know that Doug is multitasking too. I pulled up, Doug, the summary that your team pulled together for us on other courthouse investments, and it looks like Clackamas County, 95.4 million dollar other funds expenditure limitation for their replacement project. Does that sound correct, Doug? That's from the summary your team sent over?
Yeah, that sounds about right. I was going to guess that it was close to $100 million.
So, and Commissioner Dare to circle back on square footage.
Should be 39,000?
Lee, actually, as of yesterday, it's 58,300. Lee is watching, is available on Zoom and also coordinating, so we'll update that.
You know, the whole, the whole Willamette Valley gets all the money, you know, that is an important argument to make. I think we don't want to, we don't want to alienate people either. You know, the, one of the reasons that all that money has been going over to the Willamette Valley is because those are, those are growing communities. I think we kind of want to also try to position ourselves with, with the other growing communities. So if there's a way to look at the data to say, you know, we're growing just as fast as, as those guys are, and they got, and they got some of these capital courthouse capital funds, that would be great. I mean, I don't know if splicing and dicing the data in various ways would tell that story, but, you know, positioning ourselves with the other growing communities, I think, could help to appeal to certain legislators.
Okay.
Another concept that not completely thought out, but I mean, this is implementing a plan that was in place for many years. I remember, you know, we were able to pull the boards out and say, oh, this is what we were going to do. You know, we knew we were going to do this 10, 15, 20 years ago, whatever it was, is to say this will build out the campus, referring to the three buildings connected together and integrated with multiple services. So there could be some real positive, and we think it's going to be, you know, a great place for future growth. As I say, if we get another judge in, you know, 10 years and then another one in the next five or 10 years after that, we're still going to be able to host all those services. So we could write a book on all the great reasons we need these dollars.
Mr. Chair, let me just mention really quickly that I neglected to say that with redistricting, we actually have two additional representatives who've got pieces of Deschutes County, and that's Senator Finley, came and spoke before in December and who I've spoken to already several times this week. And the other is Representative E. Werner Rezki, whose district now includes Le Pine. So I will be reaching out, and our team is going to be reaching out to all five of the state representatives and senators who now pieces or all of Deschutes County.
Senator Finley's always been with us. He's been my senator, amazingly enough. So, and he answers his phone at 7:00 AM. That's the good news, when he's home.
When it's Commissioner Dare.
Well, no, no, because he's out, it's eight there.
So, yeah, any other content for today?
I, there's nothing that staff has. We will take the board's feedback on the draft letter and revise it for your review either next week or next, at your business meeting or next Friday during your legislative update, but we'll get this turned around quickly. Doug may, I don't, Doug may have other additional updates for the board, but on the staff side, I don't believe that we have anything else.
I do have a question for Doug. Doug, I forgot about this, but I had someone look it up, how much we're paid when we go and stay in Salem. And because Salem isn't part of anything special, it gets put into the general reimbursement rate. So it's like $98 to stay in Salem a night. And what kind of hotel is that going to put you in when inflation has so impacted hotel prices? So I know I thought about it in 19 when I, when we went, and then, of course, with COVID, we really haven't gone over to Salem. But, yeah, it's $98. They're in that general fund. That issue has never been addressed, that you know of?
You're referring to per diem?
Yeah, the per diem, it's $98. And I know if, I can't remember, some of the hotels, I know if you stay out right on the freeway, you get your vehicles broken into and things. So I just, I just found that fascinating that it's still, it's still in the general fund, or the general category, or whatever you want to call it.
Commissioner, I'd have to look into that, and maybe I'll, I can talk with Nick and Whitney to figure out even who sets the per diem. I don't know if that's a state issue or a local issue. So Nick and Whitney and I'll talk about this. Get back to you.
Okay, thank you. I know I had Bryn to look it up and confirm it.
Doug, this does raise another question for me, which is, you know, I have not, I have not been a commissioner during an in-person session to this point. So trying to, trying to get a read on, you know, how often it will make sense to try to get over to Salem, how much, you know, how much less or equal, you know, virtual testimony is on bills or, you know, things like that. You know, is the main value to go and visit legislators in their office? And we will, you know, AOC has monthly, monthly meetings on a Monday in Salem for the Legislative Committee and some of the other subcommittees or the, some of the, the policy steering committees. You know, does it make sense to try to tack on visits at the, you know, in, you know, the next day after that AOC meeting? Or is it really much more dependent on, you know, what bill is having a hearing on what day?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Chang, I think that's a great question. I've always been an advocate of regular and frequent and often communication. You know, the, as they say, he will gets the grease. And I think, you know, you must be present to win. They also say that. So I do think that, you know, being persistent and not letting them forget you, you know, I remember, trying to remember her name, there was a Gilliam, a Gilliam County Commissioner who for years would just camp out in the Capitol every session. Seemed like she was there every single day. And Gilliam County had 1,800 people, but at the end of the session, Gilliam County got more funding and more projects and more bills passed than anyone. And it was Commissioner Laura, I forget her last name, she's pathway now. But there's something to be said for, you know, being a regular in the Capitol. It doesn't have to be once a week, but I think to the extent that the commission, you know, maybe puts together a schedule and you're going to come over and what issues you're going to talk on between the three of you, that means that you don't all have to be here at once. And participating virtually is now a very good option. You know, in the wildfire discussion here earlier today, the Commissioner from Baker County testified that it was 12 degrees and snowing in Baker County, so he was very appreciative of the fact that he didn't have to drive away through the ice and snow to testify for 15 minutes. So I do think that the committees now all have that capability, and that's a real asset for Oregon and to be able to be heard. I don't think that dilutes your impact appearing in person versus appearing online. And it certainly frees up a lot of your time, but I'm kind of droning on here. But I, but having said that, you know, pick a day a month is what I would recommend to come over to Salem. Sometimes for a specific meeting or a specific bill, or to see a specific hearing. But our team can help put together meetings and make sure that, you know, you get meetings with your legislative delegation and meet with other people on the committees who are important to the bills and budget items that we have in the hopper.
Thank you.
So the Association of Oregon Counties has a new facility, and I think Gina Nichol has mentioned to legislators, you know, if you need, if you need a side room, come on over. It's only a couple blocks away from the Capitol. So there's opportunities to schedule AOC meeting rooms with a simple ask. So we'll keep that relationship warm for you and for our purposes, is my thought.
That's great, thank you.
She said, actually, they have food too and coffee, Doug.
Oh, there's coffee.
So, and I think it's like a block and a half or something. She said it was really close.
I bet there's going to be a coffee maker in each legislator's office. Is that what's going to happen?
It's basically right next to the railroad track. It's a really great new building.
I do want to say, I've already heard twice, that if you're coming over early in the morning, the thing that'll make legislators happy is you swing by and you pick up a pound of Sisters Coffee.
Which kind?
Sisters Coffee, Roosters. Oh, which kind?
Which kind? There's like, you know.
Dark roast.
I don't want to pick up decaf by accident. Do you want black beer, cold? Do you want French? I mean, what, what is your favorite, Doug?
Oh, it's for the legislators.
Yeah, any dark roast is fine for me, but Senator Bonham mentioned in particular that he's suffering from a lack of Sisters Coffee, so.
Oh, well, I'll be, oh.
Oh, there you go.
Senator Bonham.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll send him a text and find out what his favorite one is.
So, yeah, this is kind of kickoff for the whole thing, reviewing legislative ideas and bills that have been dropped. You're saying, is there a cycle of the bills right now? Is it pre-session filed and now there's going to be more coming?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's exactly right. They, I've actually been surprised, they dropped, the first set of bills dropped last Monday when they were all sworn in. A handful of bills have filled in and been dropped again, but the second major batch has not yet been dropped. And these are all bills that were drafted pre-session filed at the end of December. And it doesn't even begin to take into account the 41 new members who just won their reelection and didn't have an opportunity to have pre-session files drafted. So once, you know, their, their ideas are being sent down to the legislative council this week, and will probably appear in February or March. That makes it very difficult for those concepts to get through the process. So that's why, you know, pre-session filing is important. I will say that on the issue, one of the issues that we've spoken about, which is the ADU wildfire interaction, Senate Bill 644 is a bill that Senator Canop introduced. So there is, there is a bill, 644, which is in the bill review stack. And then also, as I mentioned, Senator Golden said that the Senate Natural Resources Committee is going to have a specific bill with many changes to Senate Bill 762. So that's another opportunity for us to work on our ADU concept.
And, sorry, Doug, what was that, what was that bill that Senator Golden put together?
There isn't a bill number yet for Senator Golden's bill. There is a, there are some concepts floating around, but nothing in concrete yet.
So then the Oregon Legislative Information System, OLS, is kind of the official repository. Are we going to be using BuildTracker or any brand name type product?
Yeah, we're continuing to use BuildTracker this session, and Doug's familiar with that, obviously, and our team. I think this is the second or third session we'll have used that product, so I think we're getting more familiar on our side as well with how we use that. So it's a helpful tool for us, certainly in terms of organizing and being able to run reports.
Then the other thing is setting priorities at Deschutes County. Sometimes we say, you know, priority number one, support or oppose, priority number two, priority number three. And then, you know, there's kind of gray, gray area in between each one of those two as things evolve. It's like, well, that was our number one, but it changed. So that each, you know, each week, we'll kind of review what we think the highest priority items are.
Yep, and you'll, Commissioners may recall, last year, we made a change and we started running reports at a proposed priority two and above to bring to you in your legislative updates, and that's something that staff felt worked well, and we'd planned to do that beginning next week for you, if that worked well for the board. So just checking in there, in the past, you, I think initially saw a report that also included proposed priority threes, and it made the list quite large. So we were attempting to sort of prioritize your time and staff's time by, by making that adjustment last session.
Well, and, yeah, so that would bring things that we would have thought pass, I'm just thinking my mindset, in the past, thought of as a priority three, like, yeah, we like that, but we're not going to put a lot of resources for it, or we don't like it. But now, yes, we may have a little bit larger one and two list, but wouldn't think of it as three. So that's just a philosophy of how we treat our priorities. We'll see how it goes. Okay, well, it looks like we're all set for this topic. As I say, we're going to meet, start meeting weekly on this. If anybody's following, we do have public board, or publicly posted meetings on this topic, and the session is going. So thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
So for land, use the next item. Should we stand by till 10 o'clock on this next item?
I would advise you do.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured, okay.
Notice is at 10 o'clock.
So at this time, we can go to other items for a little bit. We are having a goals and objective setting this afternoon, so it's a good time to fit in whatever else we can right now between these items.
I have a couple of other items to share. I should have, last week during other items, which was a bit compressed at the meeting, but last week, I should have mentioned that the cannabis advisory panel met a week before this Monday, that just was a couple days ago, so nine days ago, had a very informative presentation from Jessica Jacks and a couple of students, high school students, about prevention of substance use broadly by youth. There was a lot of really valuable information about kind of youth substance use concerns, you know, basically. No surprise, the number one substance that youth are illegally using is alcohol, but there are a number of other things, you know, e-cigarettes, cannabis, other things that youth are getting into as well. This led to a really good discussion about where the cannabis tax revenue is going and the advisory panel's role in advising us and making recommendations on where that money should go. And they were very interested in continuing to fund prevention activities at health, as well as the other activities, interdiction in black markets, at the sheriff's office, and also code enforcement. And they did ask, well, are there other, you know, this year, they've got a little bit more time to think about these things before they need to make recommendations. And they asked, is there, are there other county departments that are involved in these issues that we should invite to make a proposal? And that the one that came up that I, that was new, that I'm remembering, is a community justice. You know, everyone was, had kids on the brain after that presentation from Jessica Jacks. So the question was whether, if you, if you could direct some resources to juvenile justice, could they have more success in intervening in kids' lives who, you know, before they, you know, before they get into, you know, long-term, serious substance use disorders? So. So just know that that's coming down the pipeline. They were, the group was also very interested to hear that there are legislative concepts being kicked around that would restore more cannabis tax back to counties and backfill that, you know, backfill some of what's been, you know, kind of reallocated towards Measure 110 implementation, you know, treatment for all sorts, abuse of all sorts of other kinds of substances. They were really interested to know that there was a bill moving forward that would try to accomplish that. And they were excited about being able to advise us on how to spend more cannabis tax revenue if there was more. So there's that. I wanted to also mention that there is, there's a local government grant program at the Oregon Park and Rec Department that just opened up a cycle. And this is a program that helps, you know, local government cities and counties and, you know, other local government districts, you know, build and operate and upgrade parks. So I really wish we had gotten our feasibility study project going four or six months ago so that we might be in a position to apply for, you know, planning grant at this point, or even for, you know, capital dollars to construct something. But we can just flag it for next year.
You're referring, you're referring to campgrounds?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so parks and campgrounds.
Yeah, yeah, because for me, the two county-owned properties that we're talking about, I picture the campgrounds as the anchor for a new park. You know, it's what makes, it's what makes a park revenue neutral or revenue positive over time, as opposed to a day-use park. This program this year has $6 million in it, and I assume that they'll offer another cycle next year around the same time. Maybe we can be in a position to apply for these funds by that time.
Well, there may be an opportunity for some, some ask for planning or whatever at this time. You think we're past that?
I don't think we have, we would need to know, we would need the results of the feasibility study pointing us towards certain sites to be able to decide what we would want to pursue for a planning grant, I think. We haven't even started the feasibility studies yet, so.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that.
Did everyone let Chris Bell know about the letter for?
Yeah, I have not, yet.
Okay, because he said he needed that today. And then Thursday night, Bill Kuhn and I were at the chamber event regarding housing, and an interesting program by Nathan Wildfire, Missing Middle Housing. An excellent program, talking about what we need in Deschutes County is that middle housing.
By who, Nathan you said?
Nathan, and his last name is Wildfire. He's from Portland. His email was nathanwildfire@missingmiddlehousing.fund. So had some excellent ideas. And then, of course, Cor was there, and Katie gave her presentation, which we'd already seen, but Nathan was the new key person in the middle of that presentation. So I want to thank the chamber for all the work they're doing on educating our public, and it was, it was very well attended.
Great. Yesterday, I was able to go to meet the BLM leadership in Primeville in coordination with the city of Redmond. The issue is the dispersed camping at the end of the runway protection zone at the airport. So it was really just relationship building, met with Amanda Roberts and Kyle Hensley, folks that are leadership at BLM currently. Yeah, so it was relationship building, but the mayor, Ed Fitch, was there. So he was, you know, kind of getting in the groove being the mayor. It was fun to be with him, and, you know, because he's talking about the things that can be done now and the things that we just want to set in place for the next five or 10 years, from his experience being the mayor 20 years ago, is what I'm referring to. So that was pretty positive. And then Point and Time Count's next, starting next Wednesday. So remember, it's the Point and Time Count is the date, January 24th, I think it's next Wednesday, but it'll really happen for about five to 10 days. But where were you on January 24th? So that's going to be project kicked off this next Wednesday, and I'll participate in that up in East Side of Redmond, too, just being really engaged on that. And then also, Redmond's, you know, community discussion about homeless is tomorrow night, and I'll be attending that. I don't know if multiple people will be.
I'll be there as well.
Are you going to be there, Commissioner?
No, I have another event.
That's fine. So yeah, two of us will be there. That's good to acknowledge.
And I'll also, I'll also be participating in the Point and Time Count.
Great. So that's all I have today. Nick, we got seven more minutes.
Great, thanks, Commissioners. And Whitney may join me. We have a request for the mock trial competition for youth, the youth of our area, for the 2023 Mock Trial Competition. This year's event is scheduled for Saturday, February 11th. The circuit court is asking if they can use the facility from 8:30 to 4:00. You have a draft letter before you, or a letter from Judge Miller before you. They would need access from those hours and coordination with facilities and Sheriff Nelson. So my understanding is that we check in with the board on a regular basis for your approval to use the facility for these purposes on this date.
Was this Whitney's item? Oh, it just looked like you were ready to go.
She was coordinating, and we didn't know if she would be in the room or not, since we're early. I just went ahead and summarized the letter.
So yeah, I'm supportive, really exciting. It is a resource use, but, you know, sending the letter to us is acknowledging that it's happening. What a great opportunity for, you know, young individuals wanting to be involved with a mock trial competition. So yeah, this is our opportunity to spread the word a little bit on top of it. So Saturday, February 11th, 2023.
Fantastic.
Is this a vote?
I don't know that we need a vote, or I think we're just seeking the board's approval to allow the court to use the facility on a time when it's not typically used, so.
Any other comments?
I think it's a great use of the courthouse.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? So yeah, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene right at the top of the hour, 10 o'clock. Okay, microphones back on. We're reconvening as Board of Commissioners for a 10:00 AM public hearing. This is item number eight on our agenda. This is the time and place set for a hearing regarding file number 24722353PA and 354ZC. A request for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of the subject property from agriculture to rural residential exception area and a corresponding zone change to rezone the subject properties from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agriculture. Staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. For the record, my name's Audrey Stewart, and I'm an associate planner with community development. The hearings officer, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a quasi-judicial application requesting approval of a plan amendment and zone change for property encompassing approximately 59 acres. The applicant in this case is the property owner, Harold Markin. They are requesting approval to rezone and redesignate the subject property from agriculture and exclusive farm use to rural residential exception area and multiple-use agricultural. All testimony today shall be directed to the hearings body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearings body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. First, staff will explain Zoom, telephone, and in-person participation. Then, staff will provide a brief report regarding the application. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence. And third, any other interested persons or agencies will then present testimony or evidence. Then the applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. And finally, if requested by the hearings body, staff will present any closing arguments. This is a hybrid meeting with both remote and in-person participation. The hearing will function as follows. If you're attending this hearing in person and wish to testify, please raise your hand. Then, once called upon, please state your first and last name and mailing address for the record. This hearing is also being conducted over Zoom, and those joining us over Zoom are either as panelists or attendees. Attendees can view panelists but are not shown on video or have audio access until they are promoted to panelist. Panelists are on screen and have control of their audio and video. I will now cover some important tools on Zoom. The mute button is on the bottom left of your screen, and that controls your microphone. The stop video button is to the right of the mute button, and that controls your video. And finally, the raise hand feature in the center of your screen, and this is important because it will allow you to testify. Those participating by phone can press star six to mute and unmute, and can press star nine for the raise hand function. When we are ready for remote testimony, you can raise your hand using the raise hand button over Zoom or by pressing star nine. Once we are ready for testimony, you will be elevated from attendee status to panelist, and your audio will automatically be unmuted. You can then provide your testimony, and once complete, you will return to attendee status, and your audio will be muted again. The next person wishing to testify will be selected, and this process will repeat itself until all those participating by Zoom have testified. I do want to note that should the county's internet connection be interrupted, we'll attempt to get back online as soon as possible. If this happens, please give us a couple of minutes to reactivate the public hearing before you attempt to link or call back in. If your own connection gets interrupted, please attempt to join back using the same link or phone number used initially. Next, I'm going to go over the order of testimony at today's hearing. So we'll begin with the applicant's presentation. We will then move on to other members of the public or agencies who wish to testify. That testimony will begin with any members of the public who are in person, and then those who are joining us via Zoom or telephone. Finally, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal testimony. It is our responsibility, as staff in the chair, to conduct an orderly hearing. Any testimony or behavior which is inappropriate will be addressed and may result in that member of the public being removed from the hearing. Please also be respectful of meeting guidelines by following the time limit set for oral testimony. In addition to oral testimony, if anyone has written testimony to submit, you're welcome to do so. Please provide that to me if you are in person. And if you're participating remotely, you can submit your written testimony to me via email, and my email address is up on the slide. At this time, I'm going to ask if there are any objections to the format of the hearing. If yes, please raise your hand if you are in person, or use the raise hand function if you are attending remotely.
Is there anyone online? Seeing none.
I also want to note, there's a full written version of the hearing procedures, and that's available at the table at the side of the room. At this point, I will return to the script, Commissioner DeBonne. And now, Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Thank you very much, Audrey. Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner?
I have nothing to disclose.
And I, yep, I have nothing to disclose either, and I can proceed. Does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner? We are the hearing body on this, based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Seeing no one in the room. Is there anybody online? Seeing none. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? We got a belt and suspenders today. to the public hearing? We got a belt and suspenders today. Anybody online? Seeing none. Okay. The hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. I'll now provide more information on the application at hand, which is a comprehensive plan amendment and a corresponding zone change. The subject property consists of two parcels which have a combined area of approximately 59 acres. The subject property is located east of Bend and south of Highway 20 and Bear Creek Road. Due to a recent expansion of the city of Bend's urban growth boundary, or UGB, the subject property is now located across Bear Creek Road from the city of Bend's The first of the two parcels has an assigned address of 21495 Bear Creek Road, and this parcel is approximately 53.3 acres in size. Parcel two has an assigned address of 21493 Bear Creek Road, and this parcel is approximately 5.7 acres in size. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan designation for the property. They're requesting to change it from the current designation of agriculture to rural residential exception area. They're also requesting a concurrent change in the zoning designation from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agricultural. The applicant has not requested an exception to statewide planning goal three, agricultural lands, on the basis that the subject property does not meet the definition of agricultural land as defined by state statute. As part of their application materials, the applicant submitted a soil study, which was reviewed by DLCD, and this shows that the subject property is made up of 61.2% Class VII and Class VIII soils. A public hearing was held before a hearings officer on September 6. Leading up to this public hearing, I received seven written comments, and at the public hearing, two members of the public provided oral testimony. In the subsequent open record period, comments were submitted by two additional members of the public. The hearings officer recommendation was mailed out on November 7, and the hearings officer recommendation was approval. Next, I want to go through some more information on the quasi-judicial process for a plan amendment and zone change, and where this application is in that process. So the first required hearing was held before a hearings officer, who weighed the application materials as well as public testimony, and provided their recommendation to the board. The second required public hearing is today's hearing.
Can we stop real quick there? So it's a slight distinction, but a hearings officer, since this is a zone change, is a recommendation. It's not a decision that we're reviewing. And it was just pointed out to me recently, using the right terminology. So this can be a different situation when there's a hearings officer approval and it's been appealed. This is a hearings officer recommendation that needs to be, or, I guess there's one question in there.
That's DeNovo.
Yeah, well.
Exactly.
But it's required because, you know, it has to be in front of us as a board because it's a zone change.
And that's an excellent point, Commissioner. So the hearings officer did not issue a decision, which is definitely an important distinction. They issued a recommendation. They are not the decision-making body in this case, so what they made is a recommendation that they are sending to the board, and then the board will make the final decision on whether to approve or deny it.
So, but the content is as such as it could be a final decision. I mean, I guess I'm just trying to make sure I clarify. I'm looking Stephanie in the back nodding her head. But I mean, it's the same content of a decision. It's just not the authority of a decision. As in, what would the difference be between, if they had the authority as a hearings officer, it'd still kind of be the same work product. Is that correct?
Right. Good morning, Commissioners Stephanie Marshall, Assistant Legal Counsel. The hearing before the hearings officer, you know, the hearings officer will hear evidence and testimony and look at the standards and make findings on those standards, but ultimately it is a decision that the commissioners must make. You can accept the findings of the, findings conclusions of the hearings officer, reject some of them, reject all of them. You are the decision-making body, but the hearings officer does some heavy lifting prior to the matter coming before you, and lays it all out with respect to the application itself.
Well, so just for clarity, and that heavy lifting would be the same if the authority was there for a decision, like in other cases what I'm referring to.
Right.
Because we've seen a few of these now, and, you know, they're being appealed, and as I said, it was pointed out that I used the wrong terminology. It wasn't a hearings officer decision, it was a hearings officer.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. But the work product would be the same if it could have been a decision. I mean.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just a little bit of clarity.
You know, the code provisions are laid out, findings are made, you know, but, but.
The work product is.
The work product is, it's got a different name.
Yep.
And it's, it's also an acknowledgement of the fact that the board is the ultimate deciding body, not the hearings officer. And it's, so it's not an appeal, it is part of the process that's required here.
As I say, I'm just, it's kind of from my own knowledge, because I used some wrong terminology recently. I'm like, oh, okay, well, I think it's the same thing. But yeah, the decision has not been made until the board makes a decision on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So today's public hearing is the second of the two required hearings. The board will then deliberate and reach a decision. Once the board has reached a decision, an ordinance will be prepared and signed to either approve or deny the application. At the conclusion of today's hearing, the board has several options on how to proceed. The board can continue the hearing to a date and time certain. The board may close the oral portion of the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain. The board may close the hearing and commence deliberations, or finally, close the hearing and schedule deliberations for a date and time to be determined. And with that, I will open it up to any questions from the board before we move into the public testimony portion.
Any questions?
Nope.
My big question was about what's going on in the near vicinity, and this map is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I also want to note that in the applicant's presentation, I believe they also will go over some of the nearby really significant land use applications and approvals.
I guess one question I have about this is going through the list of comp plan amendment and zone change applications that are currently in motion. There's a, there was a 93-acre application somewhere in this vicinity, and I wasn't quite able to figure out where that was. Did, do, does somebody, do one of you know, happen to know, not this application that we're talking about, but one of the other applications that was.
I'm not familiar with that, but I can follow up via email. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, this is a public hearing on the matter. The applicant has the opportunity to provide testimony and evidence. Looks like, Liz, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Liz Fancher, thank you.
Fancher, and I'm here today to represent Harold Markin. He is the applicant for approval of this application. He has owned this property for decades. We would ask the board to approve the application based on the findings of the hearings officer with just minor corrections, factual corrections, and clarifications of just a few of the findings. The, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll try to go through quickly, and so I need to share screen. I'll try to do that here.
Yeah, we have Stephanie in the back probably giving you the authority for that, sharing a screen.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's see, did that, okay, did that work?
It's coming. There it is.
Okay.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, so I'll see if I can move my little picture here so I don't cover the texture. So the first, obviously, the first is a photo of the property, a part of the property. And the second slide relates to facts related to the property. It's approximately 49 acre, I mean, 59 acres. It has 9.7 acres of an irrigated lawn and pond. The Markins removed rocks when they first bought the property decades ago and grew hay on the property. Occasionally, they would have some livestock on the property, but that was not very, did not occur very frequently. Through all the time that they farmed this, or tried to farm the property, they were unable to make a profit doing so due to the poor soils and their shallow and rocky on the property. When they purchased the property, they understood that the property was really comprised of poor soils, and they never really expected that they would make money farming it, but they didn't expect that they would have significant losses. So they'd hoped to maybe break even by owning, farming the property. The next slide. The Markin property adjoins the city of Bend to the north. That's affordable housing project for the city of Bend. So it's right north of Bear Creek Road. We have an affordable housing project. The area is developed with numerous homes on small lots. The Markin property is in a very small island of land zoned EFU. It's the area that's outlined in blue and in red. It also then otherwise adjoins rural residential exception areas, the city of Bend, and urban reserve area for the city of Bend that's in county code Title 19. It's our belief that it's good long-term planning, as it was for the COID plan amendment and zone change to classify the property as non-agricultural land. The reason for that is that the city of Bend and its prior UGB expansion did not consider any property other than ones that were zoned MUA 10 or R10, or, you know, otherwise were an exception area. They did not look at anything zoned EFU. They would not even consider evidence that property really was non-agricultural land and was located in a good location that made sense for inclusion in urban growth boundary.
Liz's question, back a slide or two, you mentioned Chapter 19, urban reserve. Could you explain that a little more?
Sure. Let's see, let's go back here. Where it says urban reserve on the left, I don't know if you can see that very well, there's like a field that's irrigated, and then there's the canal that goes through it, and then the other side, there are a number of houses, rural residential houses. That's the urban reserve area that was created in Title 19, which is the ordinance that the city and county adopted to apply to what they called the outer urban growth boundary. That was actually the first urban growth boundary proposed by the city. And then DLCD did not agree to the outer urban growth boundaries. They required a short, a smaller one, which was the inner urban growth boundary. So properties that were inside of that area were then treated as urban reserve. It was done back in like 1979, 1980, when all that happened. Then across the way, which I don't know that you can see, let's see, yeah, and across the ways, I think there's a bit of urban reserve.
That's good. Yeah, the 7980 concept is what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, 7980. Yeah, that's when that happened. And so then, if we go down to the, move down to the slide that has, this is a map of the approved master plan for the property just north of the Markin property. So across the street, there will be this development. You can see a number of very small lots that are along Bear Creek Road, and then they have a park in the middle that goes around an existing irrigation pond. This property was formerly a farm, was formerly farmed very marginally, and that effort failed. It had a small amount of irrigation on it. It was rezoned by the county to MUA 10, and that allowed it to be considered for a pilot affordable housing project. And so this is the result. They're going to have a mix of affordable housing and market housing at a density of 11 dwellings per acre of the area that's developed with dwellings. And this is a photograph of that property, and you can see the pond there, and it adjoins Highway 20 and Bear Creek Road. Then the next map is, I want to show you the non-agricultural lands in the area. On this map, we have properties that were all rezoned by the county. There are two properties down at the bottom that are in red just above surface mining, where it says surface mining. It's a Stevens Road property owned by the state of Oregon. They sort of started the rezoning pattern on the east side of Bend, arguing that it's a good location for the city to grow. The county basically agreed with that, and they brought that land into the, actually into the city ultimately for half of it, but changed it over to MUA 10 zoning based on the poor soils of the property and the fact that it isn't generally suitable for farm use. The little red area just north of the Stevens Road big property is the COID property. The property in blue is the Markin property, property north of Bear Creek Road. It includes the pilot housing project property, which was Porter Kelly Burns project, and then East Side Bend properties. The one that's in the little yellow is East Side Bend, and East Side Bend is also, has land south of there on Bear Creek Road that touches the corner of the Markin property. It also had been in farm use, but it, that basically failed and was discontinued, and the property was rezoned.
Question again, real quick. So thanks for, thanks for being engaged here. For this Stevens track road, you mentioned the county, you know, thought it was a good location for the city to grow, but this was the same scenario with EFU zoning and the soils, no history of farming. I mean, because that's kind of the crux of the issue. You know, from your point of view, it isn't our opinion that it's good for the city to grow that way. It's the land use associated with soils, conditions, history of farming, and agricultural water. Would you, I mean, because that's the justification being utilized in this one also, correct?
Well, in, yeah, in this case, there was an attempt to farm the property, and that's similar to the properties to the north, where there had been farming, and it didn't, it didn't succeed. I don't know if there was farming on the Stevens Road track before it was sold to the state. You know, I believe it was owned by the federal government. It may have been used for livestock grazing. But basically, it was not possible to make a profit in money by engaging in farm use on that property. And the first one in, I think, had a fairly low percentage of seven and eight soil, but was just generally viewed as not suitable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then, this should answer the, I guess, the question presented by Commissioner Chang. And this is the application that has been, that is pending, and that will come in front of you in a couple of weeks, or maybe next week, to rezone land owned by Tameo Dispazio. I butchered that name, I apologize. So it shows where that is located. The drawing on the left shows the part of the property that's being proposed for rezoning that adjoins Highway 20, and it's also adjoins the property added to the city for the affordable housing project. So the one on the left, and then on the right, that shows land that's directly north of the property on the left, and it is, the area outlined in red, and there are two, two separate sections of land. So you can see where that all is. So that will further extend the area of MUA 10 zoning rezones to the north. And they are adjacent to the urban reserve, which is the area that is shown in pink, or whatever, almost purple. So I think at this point, the commission already knows a lot of the factors. The comprehensive plan provides that asking for non-resourced land to be redesigned is a lab of comp plan. There's a soils test in state law, and the property cannot be Class 1 through 6 soils predominantly, and it is not. It is predominantly 7 and 8, which are extremely, extremely poor soils. 61.2% are 7 and 8. Then the other question is whether the lands, despite being Class VII and VIII, are otherwise suitable for farm use, taking into consideration soil fertility, suitability for grazing, climate conditions, and other factors. What is important on this part of the test is that this has been interpreted by the Supreme Court in the weather rule decision, and they have said that farm use means that the person who's conducting an agricultural activity needs to have an intention to make a profit in money. So basically, it's a reasonable farmer test. Would someone buy this property reasonably expect to make money farming it? In this case, the Markins did not expect to make money. In this case, the Markins did not expect to make money farming the property and their experience over many decades was that they continually lost money trying to grow hay on the property and graze cattle. And they made the best efforts. They conducted accepted farm practices to do that, but the yield on the hay crop, which seemed to be the most likely farm crop to be successful on the property, just continued to lose money. Then the other part of the soils test about generally unsuitable or unsuitable is soil fertility. Class 7 and 8 soils are not fertile soils. Another question is suitability for grazing. The property could be grazed by livestock. It has been, but it hasn't been done at a level that constitutes farm use for the primary purpose. And that does say primary purpose. The main idea of conducting the activity is to obtain a profit in money by engaging in the farm enforced activities on the property.
Liz, it's Commissioner Dare. Do you know when that picture was taken?
Yes.
That one?
I believe.
When?
The spring.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, so when there was rain.
Rain with no grass, yes.
Yeah. And, and you can see the rock pile there and it's fairly sparse. I mean, it does grow grass, no, but it's not productive. Okay. So then, other question, yeah, suitable for profitable grazing. We calculated the value of grazing income, estimated 3,381. The taxes on the property are 7,886 a year. There are numerous additional costs related to grazing on the property. And so I just included what a full-time equivalent person would cost. Obviously it would be a part of that cost, but information that we located indicated that pay rate would need to be 15 to $25 an hour and that it's not uncommon to offer benefits. You have to pay for fencing, you have to purchase the livestock, you have to, you know, to start with, you have to provide veterinary care, water and pond for cattle and transportation of cattle. And all of that would far exceed the 3,381 of expected income. And then one of the factors is the existing and future availability of irrigation water. In the Assetti case, the Board of Commissioners basically opined that Class 7 and 8 non-agricultural land is not, it's not an accepted farm practice on that to put irrigation water on that type of land. From my point of view, it's not a beneficial use of water and that it really makes more sense for that water to be applied to other more productive properties in Deschutes County that need water or to be put in stream. So with these irrigation water rates, the Markins were not able to make a profit in money. It does not make it suitable for farm use. What I have showed here is information from COID, which indicates that they have curtailed the amount of water that can be used by users in the district, indicating that it's not readily available. It would not be easy for the Markins to obtain, you know, to repurchase any more water rates. They have less than 10 acres of water on the property now that they use for lawn purposes and for a pond. Climate, a very dry climate. Existing land use pattern is one of the other factors, which we've gone over before. We adjoin the MUA 10 zone and homes, adjoins the affordable housing area and urban area reserve. It adjoins a small, small EFU area with four small lots and three dwellings with one approved dwelling on it. So these properties are basically used for residential purposes. One is approved for it. The property that is immediately to the west of the Markin Property has 86.5% Class 7 and 8 soils. So it's extremely poor quality. They made an effort to irrigate it, but it's been completely unproductive and the soils are some of the worst that I've ever seen. And I, okay. So then the next one is technology and energy inputs required. The technology and energy inputs would not really change anything about that property. They did undertake an extensive effort to remove rock from the property, but it still wasn't suitable for producing a crop that was profitable. So, and then the other question is whether it's necessary to permit farm practices on other properties. And as I indicated, the other properties are not engaged in any sort of farm practice other than the irrigation of the property to the west on property that is, you know, 86.5% 7 and 8. And nothing about the Markin Property is essential to having the other property be irrigated and continued in that particular farm practice. We also looked at the transportation system planning rule. Joe Bestman of Transite Consulting worked with Peter Russell to answer questions and his analysis showed that the EFU zones that would, uses that would be permitted on this property would generate approximately the same amount of traffic as uses that are permitted outright in the MUA 10 zone. We also believe that the approval of this application will serve the public health, safety and welfare, that there's water service from Avion, electricity from Pacific Power. It adjoins a major roadway, Bear Creek Road. It adjoins the city of Bend. So if and when it is included in the city of Bend, it will result in vehicle trip reduction. It will even, it also would result in vehicle trip reduction even if it were developed with rural residential uses that are on lots that are big enough to be annexed and redeveloped. Yeah, the lot size of MUA 10 will provide open space and protect land for future urbanization. And by open space, I really just mean land that can be redeveloped. The MUA 10 zone is also the same zone as adjoining land and it allows the same approximate density of development that are on adjoining developed EFU properties, which are three houses on three of the EFU acres. And that concludes my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I should stop sharing.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Liz, could you go back and show us that property that we will be having on our docket shortly?
Sure.
Yeah, could you just show us on the map again?
Okay, let's share it again. All right. Okay. This is, it's a little hard to tell where everything is because of the fact that the colors are pretty much obscure the highway. But if you look on the picture on the right, the highway goes through the yellow area that says MUA 10 on it. And it still shows as MUA 10 for the properties in the city. But that is actually city of Bend now and has different zoning applied to it. And so it, the highway is sort of in a faint red line. On the far right-hand side, you can see the solar plants, solar farm that's, are located just to the right-hand side of, oh God, is that Hamby? I think Hamby Road. That goes north and south. So these properties are, join the highway that are proposed for rezoning and the one on the left is the part that adjoins the highway. You can kind of see the little hook out to the right. That is a property that was approved for basically a dog kennel, dog, dog training facility that is right there on the highway. And then you go straight north from the highway up to the urban growth boundary, or the outer urban growth boundary to the urban reserve and to the urban growth boundary. And then you go over to a road that's at the corner of Neff and I believe Hamby.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, that was a very thorough presentation. The one other question I had, the adjacent EFU properties, you described the residential development on, on those, but did you mention whether those, any of those properties to the immediate west or, to the immediate west, the EFU properties, are, are any of those in agricultural production?
There's one that could be, you know, is in agricultural use or has been because the prior owner attempted to maintain EFU status on the property and so he put in a pivot and failed miserably on it. It was extreme large mistake on his part. But, but he tried to farm it and then that's when it looked like, you know, if you look at the NRCS map, it looks like they would be good soils and that might work. And in fact, when they had the soil scientist come out for the lot of record dwelling, they found that 86.5% of the property was 7 and 8, that there is just a huge amount of rock on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the others are just really residential properties, but that one that is currently or, or available for irrigation because they have a pivot.
Okay, thank you very much for the testimony.
Thank you.
You'll have an opportunity at the end for a rebuttal.
Thank you.
So at this time, are there any other interested parties, parties that was to present testimony or evidence on the matter?
Good morning, Chair DeBonne, Vice Chair Adair and Commissioner Chang. My name is Rory Isbell. I'm a staff attorney with Central Oregon Land Watch. I've got some written comments here today that I will hand you a copy of.
Thanks, Rory.
For the record, again, my name is Rory Isbell with Central Oregon Land Watch. Our address is 2843 Northwest Lolo Drive, Suite 200, Bend, Oregon 97703. Land Watch is opposed to this application. As you've heard, it seeks to rezone about 60 acres of agricultural land that's zoned for exclusive farm use to allow rural residential uses. The applicant here argues that these 60 acres are not protected by statewide land use Goal 3. You've heard about the, the test as to whether land qualifies as agricultural land under Goal 3. It's a four-part test. It looks at the soils, looks at suitability of land regardless of soils, and then a couple other factors that must be looked at as well. I, I want to start with that second factor I mentioned, which is whether a property is suitable for farm use regardless of its soils. So in the written testimony I've handed you, there's a series of aerial photographs taken straight from Google Earth. You know, Google Earth will look back in time and show you the land use patterns and activities on a property over the, over the course of, as long as we've had aerial imagery, I guess. So the first image is the, the kind of, the default image that pops up and that's on page two of what I've handed you. You can see this property is very green, a lot of agriculture happening on this property. That next image, page three, shows the property in 2018, looks pretty similar, growing, growing a hay crop throughout most of this property. On page four, we see the property in 2017, again, looks similar. It's mostly irrigated, growing a crop. Page five has the property in 2014, it looks about the same. Page six has the property in 2012. Page seven has the property in 2011. Page eight has 2006 and page nine has 2005. So in all of these years, this property has been used for agriculture. I don't think you need to look much further than that to find that this property is suitable for agriculture. The, the application itself describes this long history of farm use on the property since the applicant acquired it apparently in 1981. The application says that they grew hay and occasionally raised cattle and made efforts to make a profit in money by farming the property. So for many, many years, this property was put to the definition of farm use at ORS 215203, which is the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money. That was the purpose of irrigating this property, growing hay and selling that hay, was to make a profit in money. You, you heard about profitability and, you know, that, that's the primary reason why this property should not be protected by Goal 3 for farm use. What the courts have said is, and there's a quote here, I'm on page 10 of our written testimony, is, is that while profitability is a permissible consideration in determining whether land is agricultural land under the rule definition, it is a relatively minor consideration and one with a large potential for distracting the decision maker and parties from the primary considerations listed in the rule. So yes, profitability can be considered, but it's at the bottom of list. And I think the series of photographs I've shown you and the history of farm use on this property that the application acknowledges should be the top of the list of what you're considering as to whether this property is suitable for farm use. I also want to note that this property used to have 36 acres of water rights until very recently, this applicant and owner sold all but nine and a half acres of those water rights. Now it, it seems that that fact is, is being used to argue that this, this should not be considered agricultural land because it doesn't have water to grow a crop. A similar situation has arisen before Luba in the past and Luba rejected that tactic. That case is Peterson v. Crip County 49 or Luba 223. There is also a soils report that's, that supports this, this application from a soils consultant. That report, I suggest you look at it carefully because it has its narrative followed by a series of data tables. Those data tables capture what that soil scientist actually went out and found on this property. Of the 50, is it 53 observation sites where this consultant actually went out, dug into the soil, analyzed whether it's suitable for farm use, 29 of those sites were found to be Class 1 through 6 and only 24 were found to be Class 7 through 8. Now Land Watch pointed this out to the hearings officer and the response from the applicant and their soil scientist was that, well, the soil scientist stated that they made additional observations, but that those were not shown on the map or tabulated. But they, you know, despite having looked at those 53 sites and most of them being Class 1 through 6, their conclusion was, well, I visually saw elsewhere on the property and drew my lines as to where I believe the soil classes are, such that the majority is Class 7 and 8 and not majority 1 through 6, even though those observation sites, again, the only hard data on the soil suitability, the majority of them, 29 versus 24, were found to be Class 1 through 6. So, you know, given this property's long history of being put to farm use for a profit, its long history of having irrigation water available and its, its suitability of its soils for agriculture, both as determined by the NRCS and I believe this soil scientist report, Land Watch believes it's clearly agricultural land protected by Goal 3 and that an exception to Goal 3 would be required to approve this application. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you might have them.
So I have a question. In your, in your written testimony, the comment section, it talks about relatively minor consideration for agricultural land for profitability. So that was the concept. And then it lists the other items, soil fertility and suitability for grazing. As I look at this case, the word Douglas County jumps out at me and it's the other side of the mountains, very different conditions. So I'm just envisioning if I was standing in Douglas County anywhere and we looked at the ground and we thought, is this suitable for grazing? My, my vision is there's probably six to eight 12-inch tall grass thriving naturally and it's different than that photo that was shared with us. I'm just pointing out the east and the west sides of the state. So how could you put a weight on a Douglas County land use decision in the concept of soil fertility and suitability for grazing?
Sure, thank you for the question. Well, it's a statewide rule, so you consider those factors no matter where you are in the state. And your comments on grazing, grazing in rangeland is the most widespread and most profitable in range land is the most widespread and most profitable agricultural use, the side of the Cascade Mountains. So it is the number one agricultural use that we see on this side of the state with the climatic conditions that we have here.
Well, we've seen testimony along those lines. You know, it's great, let's go put a couple cows out on a couple hundred acres and have them eat. In Douglas County, let's put a couple cows on a couple acres and let's have them eat. I mean, it's just a huge difference. You know, it's been stated that, you know, a cow's going to need to graze at 35 miles an hour to get enough feed on some of these high desert climates. So it's just fact, it looks like fact to me.
Sure. Yeah, grazing is one consideration. I, again, would just point you to the long history of agricultural use that this owner has accomplished on this property, that it's suitable for uses other than grazing as well.
And then it steps into the concept of, you know, has it ever been profitable?
Right.
And I, as I say, I've experienced some farming in my day and, you know, you get everything rocking and rolling. You go out there, you cut it, you dry it, you rake it, you bail it, and then some piece of equipment breaks and then you're a couple thousand dollars behind. There's profit gone, so.
If I could, there are a number of properties in Deschutes County with very similar soils with irrigation water that are even smaller than this one that make a substantial profit. I believe it's a matter of putting in the time and energy and effort to turn that profit.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Just to refresh me Rory, do you remember when they got rid of the other 27 acres of water rights?
I believe it's in the last few years, but I would direct that question to the applicant to confirm.
Okay, all right. I know it's in the, I just didn't remember. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ask Liz.
That decision that you cited Rory, could you repeat the citation for that, the one that says that profitability is a minor consideration?
Sure, so the citation is included on page 10 and that case is Weatherill v. Douglas County 58 or Luba 638. And we heard reference to the same line of cases from the applicant in their presentation, and this is in those same proceedings. This is when this case went back down to Luba from the higher courts.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else willing to testify on this matter? Is there anyone online? No phone calls. Okay, so at this time, is there rebuttal, there's a rebuttal opportunity. Is there any request for rebuttal? Oh, there you go. Liz, please.
Okay. Just like to correct a couple things or at least point out points of disagreement that Markham's would have with Central Oregon Land Watch. Initially, I have to say that we're disappointed that Land Watch would not support this application or remain neutral on it, given the fact that it supports reasonable future urban expansion in this location. The property is extremely poor quality, as clearly shown by the soils analysis. The soils report is accurate, it's been reviewed, have been conducted appropriately. Mr. Isbell does not or posits a theory that the number of test pits that you put on a property determines the percentage of each soil type, and that's completely wrong. And it is, what is done with the test pits is that then a map is created to show areas, to delineate areas of different soils on the property. And more points are taken in areas that might be good soil to identify them. When something is poor soil, it's a little, you know, a little easier to tell. And so the soil scientist provides a map and then you take the map areas and compare the areas. You don't compare the number of points. So his methodology just has you looking at, well, I have 35 points that are Class 6 and I have 33 that are Class 7 and 8, therefore, a majority of the property is Class 6. And it doesn't work that way. Also.
So for clarity on that, so you're looking for a footprint of soil changes, as in you're saying that there's a perimeter maybe of a soil type, so you'll take as many samples in an area to figure out where that perimeter is of changing types is what I'm envisioning? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think generally. I'm not a soil scientist, nor is Mr. Isbell. But there's evidence in the record from the soil scientist about his methodology and how it is handled and how he mapped it. And the two, just even logically without a response, just don't equate. It's apples and oranges that they're asking you to consider. So basically, the number of test pits and the results for the number of test pits is irrelevant to deciding whether or not the percentage of the property is comprised of one soil type or the other. That's based on mapping the property, determining where the soil units are located or where the soils are located, and then determining the percentage from there.
Thank you.
We, also, the statement was made that Goal III has a test that's regardless of soils. And as far as the suitability for farm test, which is what I think was being referred to, it says that property has to be suitable for farm use considering soil fertility, suitability for grazing. So it does look to the quality of the soil. And that is a major factor, the type of soil classification that are on the property. And then when you look at the 7 and 8, the question is, is this really horrible soil still fertile? For understanding like cases from the valley in Roseburg, the main difference there is that the soils in those areas are non-agricultural if they are better soils than we have here. So in those areas, Class 1 through 4 soils are considered agricultural soils. Here, 1 through 6 soils are considered agricultural soils. So the test is much more rigid in eastern Oregon than it is in the Bullamette Valley, where we have actually the good farmland. So there is a difference. The case that's cited, obviously, is a legal decision. The Weatherill case that I have mentioned is a Supreme Court's decision that says that suitable for farm use test is based on intention to make a profit and money. Basically, Land Watch's argument is that someone, just because they are growing a crop, they're engaged in agriculture, they said suitable for agriculture, that means that they are then engaged in farm use. And in this case, we have evidence that Mr. Markham did not intend to make a profit and money on this property. He hoped to break even and they lost money. They worked really hard to try to make money. They did not slack on this property. You know, the testing that other properties can make money, well, yeah, if you have better soil, you can maybe make money, you can make money raising hay. But if you have really poor soils, you aren't going to obtain the yield that you need to produce a profitable crop, basically because the soil does not hold water when it's too shallow and so, or is not of appropriate fertility. So that is the actual factual scientific evidence, that is expert evidence in the record that supports the reason. What, then there was a claim that we were relying on the fact that the property only had nine acres of irrigation water rates to justify this application, and that's completely incorrect. We are plainly disclosed that there were 36 acres of irrigation on this property, and with that amount of irrigation, the property did not generate a profit and money. It grew an extremely poor hay crop. And that it did not result in making the property suitable for farm use. So extreme efforts were made to make this property suitable for farm use, and they were able to grow an unprofitable crop, and that is as good as it gets in this particular case. The location of the property is just in the middle of all these rural residential exception areas, all these areas that are likely going to be added to the city of Bend. And it seems extremely inefficient to leave this particular property out when that happens, because it has EFU zoning that doesn't fit the property.
Liz, I had a question for Rory. When did they drop the other 27 acres of water rights?
That was fairly recently, a few years ago perhaps.
Okay.
And how many, we got to see those aerial photos of a number of years of, you know, efforts at agriculture. How long have the Markhams been farming this property or trying to farm?
For about 40 years, and they stopped farming it for a number of years that are in the record that I don't exactly remember, like seven years maybe.
It stopped in 2016 apparently.
Around then, where they were really actively trying to, they themselves were actually out there farming it. I think they might have had contract harvesting for a bit, but that, after that point, but that was it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that the end of your testimony?
That's the end, thank you.
Okay. So this has been a public hearing on the matter. Thank you very much for participating. Any thoughts to finish up?
I just wanted to respond very quickly to the question about when the water rights were relinquished. So I sent a notice to this application, the Central Oregon Irrigation District, and in their comments, they just said that it was since 2018. So it's been 26.51 acres that were relinquished since 2018. And then my.
Relinquished date may be the official transfer out of ownership, because there could have been an in-stream, or I'm just pointing out, there could be other things that could have happened over the years where they didn't utilize the water. It could have been in-stream or something, or not utilized at all.
Correct, and I would look to the applicant to give more detail on that. And then my only other closing remark is that I have a slide prepared regarding requirements for document submission during the open record period if the board does decide to leave the written record open.
So that would be a decision for this time. What's the will of the board for closing the hearing? So I'll support closing the oral portion and, you know, standard is keeping the written record open. Would there be any reason to not support that or you have a standard?
No, it makes sense.
Three-week process? Keep it written open?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Let's support that.
Yeah, okay. So standard, let's close oral portion, leave the written record open for a three-week period or new testimony and response and final rebuttal.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Bear with me, thank you. Should the board decide to use the 777 open record format, I have the dates up on the board. So new evidence and testimony could be submitted up until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, January 25. Rebuttal testimony could be submitted up until 4:00 PM on February 1. And then the applicant's final legal argument would be due by 4:00 PM on February 8. And regarding document submission, email submittals can be sent to me. My email address is up on the board. Please note, Deschutes County does not take responsibility for retrieving information from a website link or personal cloud storage service. And then also as a final reminder, please make sure that documents are submitted in enough time that they're received by our county servers by 4:00 PM.
So taking responsibility for retrieving information from a website link, is the concept, if you click it and it works, it's good, but if it doesn't work, we're not going to take time to figure it out?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner. As our policy, we don't retrieve documents, for example, from a Google Drive, anything like that. If someone wants to submit a large document and it's too big to send over email, they can break up into multiple emails or they can deliver a hard copy.
Okay, so we're not going to follow a link even if it's a valid link?
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Well, there we go. So that's it for this item on today's agenda. We'll have this written record period for a few weeks and come back to deliberate in the future. In fact, did we set the deliberation date? I was not focused on the last slide? Yeah, so deliberation date has not been set.
No.
Okay.
Do you want to do that now?
Well, I was.
It'd be cleaner for the record, everybody would know.
We can propose a date. Yeah, if we're ready to pull out a calendar, we can propose a date.
Could you go back to that 777?
So February 8 is a Wednesday about four weeks from now, so then.
Wednesday, I'll be flying to DC.
Which is fine, yeah. So we're just looking for a date after that. In fact, yeah, you mentioned you wanted, what was it, you wanted, we could have a meeting before you leave and not after, or which?
I was hoping we could not do the meeting on the 8th and on the 15th. If we could meet at 10 instead of 9, that would be awesome.
Okay, so yeah, and we could. I mean, that wouldn't be a problem. So we will generally be able to meet on the 15th of February.
This is just the final argument for the 8th. So staff's going to need time to assemble the final packet, so maybe the 22nd would be a better.
Two weeks later?
Eight.
There we go. So February 22nd.
I'm not going to be here that day.
Okay. So March 1st, just slipping, stepping to Wednesdays. So March 1st is okay?
April 1st, sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. Yes, March 1st.
Yeah, so it'll be three weeks after that then.
How appropriate.
Okay, so yeah, let's set it for March 1st. As I say, if there's any reason for a change, we'll have plenty of time to notify all parties, but propose March 1st.
Thank you, and staff will reach out and confirm this again.
Okay.
When we finished the hearing on this specific property, I wanted to just kind of pull out to the 90,000-foot level and talk at the policy level for a moment about this.
So yeah, let's conclude this agenda item and then, I mean, if you want to bring something up, we'll call it other items, and if it's for discussion or for future discussion, that's fine.
I mean, it's prompted by this particular, but we.
But not on this application anymore?
No, yeah, not on this application, not on this specific quasi-judicial process. But I mean, if you look at this map, there is, we have a lot of rezone, you know, compliance amendment and rezone applications coming through the pipeline. And with the idea, you know, we heard from Liz Vantry, you know, this is supposed to, the idea here is to support the orderly, you know, reasonable future urban expansion for the city of Bend. I have some concerns about the timelines for things lining up, you know, hearing from the city of Bend that they may not be pursuing an urban growth boundary expansion for a little while. And that begs the question, you know, on the county side outside the urban growth boundary, whether these landowners who have accomplished these rezones will be willing to wait until the urban growth boundary expansion occurs to, you know, do some development and, you know, realize the, you know, realize the proceeds, the profits from the zone change that they've accomplished. And, you know, I'm very supportive of the idea of preparing lands for inclusion in the urban growth boundary expansion, you know, and that proceeding very smoothly. So I, you know, in that sense, looking at these rezone applications kind of as a package, the CUID plus the ones, this one and the one that's coming up, it's, you know, it's a story that makes a lot of sense, but if the urban growth boundary expansion is not going to happen really soon, then I have concerns that people might want to build out the, these areas at MUA 10 densities, which then makes it really difficult later on for the city to annex the properties in and develop it at urban densities. You know, once there's a, you know, a 10-acre property with a really nice house on it, those people aren't just ready to, okay, take, you know, take my house off this landscape and, you know, develop it at, you know, five or 10, five or 10 units per acre. So. So, I, I, I just want to flag that. I think that we should be trying to do some kind of proactive coordination with the city of Bend to ensure that these lands that are kind of, you know, I, I think everybody hopes that they will be included in the city at some point in the future. It's just that people have different kind of understandings and expectations right now about when that's going to be. So, I, I'm hoping that we can do some kind of proactive coordination with the city to ensure that that is what happens, or, you know, increase the probability that, that those things actually do line up, and that we don't essentially, you know, and what, to me, would, in, in my mind, it would be a waste of acres immediately adjacent to the city of Bend for them to be developed at very low densities, because, you know, that could be hundreds and hundreds of units of housing at a later point in time if they don't get developed out at, at, at rural densities or, or, you know, 10-acre densities now. I just kind of wanted to flag that concern.
Well, I'm looking at House Bill 4079, right above the property, and as much as we need those 347 units sooner rather than later, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that is, that, that's one way that this could work, you know, short of a, short of a full urban growth boundary expansion. We've seen these one-offs, the HB 4079, the Hayden Homes Project, Stevens Road is the Stevens Road Track. That's another one-off urban growth boundary expand, expansion. And if that's, you know, that's a possibility for how this might work, but like, it's also a possibility. It's not going to work that way. So, I, I, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we get the most out of these lands in the long term, because it's a, it's an incredible opportunity right on the edge of the city of Bend.
Well, these are...
You could, we could, you know, we could explore some kind of like urban area reserve type, type arrangement. There's a, I think that there's probably a lot of ways to, to grapple with this, but we have to decide we want to grapple with it, you know, for something to happen.
And the urban reserve project, that, I mean, that's built into the state land use system. You define where future development is going to occur, even though it's not an urban growth boundary expansion at this point in time. So, there's, there's history on that.
But somebody's got to, somebody's got to seek, seek an urban area reserve for it to happen, so. I mean, we can...
Looks like Nick, an experienced planner, county administrator, may have thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of quick comments. One is, I did submit comments on behalf of the board for the city of Bend City Council Goals about housing and addressing housing and suggesting the idea of the urban reserve in, in response to this general issue about the rural residential designations, or that's what we categorize them, as they're often also thought of as, as multiple-use agricultural 10, MUA-10. So, I did, I did raise it there. Peter has identified to me that Section 10 of House Bill 2889, a really comprehensive bill, and I looked it up while we were, while the board was meeting, to look at it. And it talks about streamlining the urban growth boundary process and, and creating rules and whatnot to allow for UGB expansions to address housing production and housing, housing needs analysis. So, to, to address some of these issues. And then, just the third piece is, I'm happy to continue to work with Eric King, Bend City Manager, just to get a sense of what their timeframe may be on future either UGB amendments or urban reserve process, et cetera. Because, yeah, we can see, as Liz summarized in her presentation, we're not talking about that now, but how these are stacking up along the east side of the city of Bend. So, just a few thoughts about this issue that, yeah, that is before the board frequently.
So, Nick, was that House Bill 2889?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Correct bill?
Correct. Yes. In fact, I think they, they may have had the start of a, of a hearing on it yesterday, the first day of, of the session. Doug Riggs had reached out to me about that, and I said, we weren't quite prepared to dive into that just yet before. I didn't want to get ahead of the board. But Peter summarized, he pointed me to, it's a 49-page bill, so I asked him, so what section?
Section 10.
Section 10, which is very helpful just to kind of see what that looks like. So, it's on our radar.
Well, and, you know, I think we're in an interesting situation where private property owner, you know, long history of farming, not profitable. There's a pretty black-and-white path. It says, you know, if you can do these justifications, just like other people have, just like the state led on, that's the path. So, you know, it sounds like, you know, there may be a, a request to have another layer here. Well, that's the path, except if, if we need your land or not. That's a different scenario, is what I think I'm seeing.
I specifically said I wanted to kind of jump to a different level and leave the quasi-judicial...
Oh, yeah.
...decision that we need to make on, on, on this property, on, you know, on the, on the subject...
And I'm saying that at a higher level, too.
Yeah, but at, at the higher level, what I know is that, is that we have a real need for housing in our community. And if we were to fill up some of the, you know, most prime urban expansion opportunity area in the whole region with, you know, high-end, low-density development, basically, we have lost a lot of opportunity for units. So, that's my concern.
Well, and at a high level, I think there's a lot of people looking for that, you know, small ranchette, rural farming, little bit of elbow room style. So, are we saying no to that?
No, there's quite a lot of that in the county.
Would we ever be able to make another parcel? Add land to that, land mass? So, and this is what, what was it? Yeah, we were sitting here with the Bend leadership, talking about another rezon recently. We're not adding acres. It's rezoning acres. If there ever a path to add acres, privately owned, developable acres from public ownership?
I think from public ownership.
Yeah.
But which public ownership are you talking?
Well, we have local, state, and fed. Any public ownership.
I think that there's, there are places where it would be appropriate to look at that. You know, for example, I, I provided plenty of detailed information to, to sled when they were interested in acquiring additional land from BLM. That is, you know, land that the BLM is comfortable with disposing with for future industrial growth. And there are, there are definitely opportunities for looking at appropriate sites, public land, that could be, could move into, you know, private development opportunities such as, such as the Skyline Village, or whatever it's being called, at this point, North Point. You know, that's our, that's county property, right? That was BLM property. So, there's, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to appropriate sites being, you know, brought into private, you know, private property to, you know, for, for growth and, and new development. I'm just, to me, there are right places to do that, and there's wrong places to do that.
Yeah, so this is, this is the big conversation. It's going to go on for time, all time.
I would think that, I would think that our friends over at, you know, in the builders or Realtors Association, if you said to them, would you rather have, would you rather have, you know, eight or 10 properties, you know, eight or 10 units of housing, or would you rather be able to build hundreds and hundreds of units of housing? I think that they would probably say they would rather have hundreds and hundreds of units of housing.
Well, there's development opportunities in all the cities of, of Deschutes County and other cities in the state, too, so. It's all good. I mean, yeah, we'll keep this conversation going.
I mean, you're, you're, you were frequently, you're frequently saying that land supply constraints are a major, major concern. So, this certainly seems to me like a way to not make more acres, but make a whole lot more parcels by doing a little bit of proactive coordinated planning amongst jurisdictions.
At this time, that was the end of our agenda for today. We are meeting in a, kind of a follow-on board meeting, work session all afternoon today and Friday for goals and objectives, planning for the year. So, we'll reconvene at 1:00 for that. Is there anything else for this?
Downstairs here?
12:45.
It's just 12:45 on our schedule.
There's, I think, yeah, there's... So, one more item. There's a brochure for the Core 3. Sorry, I was almost finished. Almost done. I just had this one piece of paper I wanted. Core 3 brochure. So, I'm just acknowledging there's printed material promoting Core 3. It's being handed out a little bit. So, I'll give this to Brenda just for our meeting minutes, just as an attachment, acknowledging the first version of a brochure. 12:30 upstairs for goals and objectives. With that, meeting adjourned.